Good. Okay, good afternoon everybody. Welcome to the planning meeting for Brandon Town Council for the 4th of November. I think apologies from anybody? Oh, from Nicky, thank you. Declaration of interest, agreed, signed the book, thank you. Item three is to receive, confirm and sign the minutes of the planning committee on the 7th of October. Can we have a proposer for that please?
A proposer, yeah.
Councillor Kinnock, seconded by councillor Gorange, all those in favour please? Karen, unanimous, thank you. Public participation, we have nobody here today. So we will move straight on.
I'm behind in my course.
Move straight on to the planning matters for today. Item number five is a planning application for new Viking Lodge. And this is for a variation of occupancy from agricultural. From my understanding, there's a lawfulness certificate on this, so there's...
Yeah.
No comments really, isn't there?
Well, what they actually write in the report wasn't it, was the certificate of lawfulness has been granted and therefore it's considered that the agricultural occupancy condition is now obsolete.
And that's been there for not many years, I believe.
Ah, yeah, and it said...
This came before us in September, I do believe. And that was, how I'm reading it, that was for the lawful certificate to be granted. Because we have, this has come across, this has been presented to the planning committee before, hasn't it?
Yes, yes, it has, yes. It gives, I thought it was a variation, I can't quite see.
So the condition can no longer be enforced, so obviously they're going to rescind the restriction on the, specifically for the agricultural use, if that makes sense anyway. But we know that's been rented out over several years. Over several years for varying conditions as well, so it can't be enforced. So I'm just one person, but I'll support, I'll support the application.
Yeah, I think we're in a similar situation, yeah, yes.
And all that is, is people who will rent the building out, they don't have to be agricultural workers, they don't have to be farm workers.
That's right, I mean, it does free up, that's quite a large property, free separate property for a family capable. So can I have a proposer for supporting this motion? Thank you, Henry, seconded, Paul, thank you. Those in favour of supporting, all four, thank you. So that's that one. Is this a late one?
That's the same one.
Trees.
Don't worry, I have a moment.
Right, okay, my moment.
Because I read it and I thought, I'm sure I did.
Was that the timber one?
No, that's the trees in the conservation, that was just a duplicate from last month, I think. The trees that were being cut down will go for that paper now, won't they? Any applications received after the agenda was produced? We don't have any, but we have this Methworld Farm. Item here. Any comments on this, please, gents?
Well, I think we're all in agreement that we're going to object to...
Yes.
Yeah, we did before, didn't we?
And I thought we had, I thought we had instructed the office to object to the application.
Yes.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've a letter sent him.
Yeah.
Of email.
Upon the website.
There's nothing to do with the environmental side of it now.
With what?
The environmental side of it now.
This is, this is for the, yeah, this is for the planning application.
This is...
For the tricking, they do.
EA permit.
Right, so if they haven't got planning permission for the extensive farm issue, why do we, why do we have to have an environmental certificate?
Exactly, yeah.
Time to say that the, the thing with the environment permit is that if that is passed, it gives way to the planning application to be passed. Which is why there's been so much interest in the EA permit, because normally they probably wouldn't get the amount of traction that it's got. But, I mean, literally they've written to every council, pretty much in like a 15 mile radius of this place.
So this is for environmental assessment on the plan, isn't it?
It's for an EA permit to allow...
EA's environmental assessment, isn't it?
An environment agency permit to carry out the works. And so it's a different criteria to planning.
It's an easy way to go, route to them.
Yeah, trying to pull all over them.
Yeah, it's quite long and detailed and it, to get into it and see what's there is, unless you're an expert.
Yeah.
I, I did share four responses, I sent links to four responses, because there's a lot of responses. But like with all of these things, it's about the quality of the response, just then you don't want something, you know, literally they look at it and discard it.
Yes.
So I did send out four where people had actually gone into depths that mentioned sort of like policy and things. I don't know if that's of any...
Yeah, it's much appreciated, any assistance.
Yeah. So I did send that out, I mean, but they did say, I mean, they actually give you a list of what you can and cannot, let's say it can be. So it can be that it doesn't meet EA regulations, that it affects a local population sensitive environmental sites. Whether the right process is being used for the activities, so are they carrying out the operations in the correct way? The shape and the size of the land in terms of potential impact, whether that's acceptable? And whether the pollution from that area would go into surrounding areas and affect those? The impact from the noise and odor from traffic on site, which is probably fairly generalistic. I mean, that's one of the permitted planning objections as well, isn't it? And, and if there's any incorrect information on the application. But again, as you say, you potentially have to know your ownians to know their words. Yeah, you're going to have to have quite an in-depth knowledge, I suspect, of doing that. What you can't do is, whether it should have a formal designation, whether the activity should be allowed as a matter of principle, whether there's a waste and senior rate of proposal, whether the land issues determine a permit application, which is what everybody thinks they aren't trying to use it for. And it's interesting, because they said you can't do the impact of noise and traffic too from the site, but you can do noise and odor on the site. So if, once it comes off, we're not allowed to complain about that. We are allowed to complain about what would happen on site, because it's an environmental, not a planning application.
Can we not go down the route that it's going to affect local areas all the way around it with, basically smells?
Well, it's saying that you can't, because that's off the site. So that would be a planning consideration, but it's not an EA permit consideration.
What was the, sorry, what was the, one of the first ones you read out was impact, the local people?
And sensitive sites, information on local population and sensitive sites.
Yeah.
So if the, if this EA one goes through, how does that affect a planning application?
Well, it would give, because a lot of the planning application, what they're, what they're looking at for the planning application, one of the big things is the environment assessment that they've been waiting for for months, haven't they? I think the environment assessment's going to become available, or is it, by the end of November, something like that? Or maybe, I don't know if it's something, I actually, I haven't, I haven't checked. But they're waiting for that environment statement, that's the big complaint. And that they think that if they can stop it happening, it's going to be that. So obviously if they manage to get the EA permit through, that gives way to them.
So are we in a position to object to the permit here, granted?
Well, I don't think we are, because, I mean, if, if it's not for smells off site, I mean, what effect is it going to have?
Well, we've got to try, we've got to try and keep this simple. We have objected to the development because of HGV movement, is that correct? We've objected to that.
But that's off-site, so it doesn't count within this.
And there's not much more we can do at this planning time, isn't there? Surely, I mean, when it comes to planning, they really need a lorry management plan. In other words, which way are your lorries going to go? If they're going to go A134 and then pick up the ALN, we don't have a problem with that. But if they come from Methworld, Wheating, and then through Brandon, that is our objection, isn't it?
I mean, I actually spotted three of their vehicles on Thursday, can't...
Cransby lorries.
I haven't seen them, I've not seen them.
Seen a brogue coming through, yeah.
But they have, have you seen Paige, they've stomached yous, it's a route. And this is from the Watten site, where you get to Norfolk. I mean, you would have presumed from Watten, they would go straight to Thetford, get on the A11.
But they don't.
Nobody does that.
It's four and a half miles longer.
Originally.
Even in Wattenberg, they would go straight to Thetford, it's an A road.
Well, it's, originally they actually did designate the route they were going to take, to educate everyone, like. But we know that as well as anyone here, they won't follow that route, will they?
No.
Yeah, if they get granted planning permission and they ignore our cries for help, then the only option we've got, we ring the company up and say, could you send your lorries round the A11 instead? And that's the only tool we'll have in our box.
That's right.
Looking at what other people said, the proposed site is covered by an SPA for the protection of fauna and fauna. So you can object on the fact that there is no breakdown of how they're going to deal with pollution and how they're going to mitigate that against the SPA.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to...
So because everything we, for this one, everything we object to has to be about the site. So if it covers an SPA, they haven't said how they're going to deal with that. Particularly as there is a chalk stream running next to it, which is on the highly protected by EA at the moment. But that's...
We do have a situation though, if we, if we are putting objection in on the environmental impact flora and fauna over there, are we not being a bit hypocritical? Then when we're asking for, you know, we're looking at housing over here impacting on similar circumstances.
Well, my answer to that is everything is on a case by case.
Absolutely.
And it's all about degrees, because you may well be able to find very good projects and mitigate anything that you want to do in Brandon. Currently, there isn't any mitigation project.
So where do we go then, gents?
I'm baffled, I have no idea, because that seems to be outside of our reading. But if there is an opportunity to object to anything on this, anything at all, then I think we should object.
Yeah, I think if we can nip, if we can help the other councils and nip it in the bud and get it stopped early enough without then having to worry about the transport side. I wonder if we would get any further guidance off Tom, Tom Rives?
No, he's the one who's been sending all the time, I've been talking to him because of work with other councils as well. I've been talking to him about this and it is actually going out to everyone, it's all wet around this EA...
Sorry, is it Methworld Parish Council or is it Feltmore Parish, or is it both? Is it both? Who does it affect?
I think Methworld is the closest, but some of the parishes around there don't have councils and clerks. They're, because they're too small.
Yeah, but Methworld Parish, I mean, what is their, what is their view? What is their view? What's their position on this?
Without them...
If we're going to object, then are they going to object?
Well, they are dead against, yeah.
I think they are, they are, they're going to object.
There are, they've got groups, we had the, we had the two ladies in full council.
I don't know, you might have to get in touch with the team and see what their position...
It would be nice to get some sort of guidance from the people of that kind, where we can...
Where we can help.
I think the problem is, is you won't meet again before the end of the consultation.
The period there.
And when does it close? When does the window close then?
I think it's, I think it's Monday.
Right, so what can we object? They're, they're waiting for comments, for objections or, they're waiting for comments for where can we, as a planning committee, what can we object? We don't want an objection to go in and that's not relevant, is it?
I think your, probably your easiest one is the fact that there's not evidence of how they're going to mitigate potential pollution issues.
Right, so that, you'd use that rather than the, the SPA?
Well, the fact that it's got an SPA and it's an EA one and you're worried about pollution, both air, slurry and noise on site and the effect on the local environment, I think that's... Because that's, it's an environment agency permit, that's, you've got to talk their language.
Yeah, I think that's the one we should get.
Okay, so I think the consensus is that we, we object on the grounds that have just been put up there.
On the grounds of what, air pollution?
Air.
Yeah.
Noise. Air pollution, noise.
Slurry?
Yeah, so basically all the waste they wash away with water, where do they wash it away to? Or do they just wash it in the soil?
And the chalk stream as well.
Yeah, chalk stream river. So, yeah, I, I think that's probably your, I agree with you entirely, there's not point in writing something that's got no teeth. So you need to actually deal with the issues that the EA would object against and that would...
So we're going to object because of environmental pollution, is that correct?
Yeah.
And the lack of mitigating.
Well, I'm not aware that there's an impact, any impact assessment, is an impact assessment even being carried out on this? I don't think there is, is there?
Well, there's, there's a lot been done on that, all of that's on the planning. The thing is, is they haven't provided a good, this is what the problem is, as you say, they haven't provided a good, this is what the problem is, and this is what the solutions are. They've provided documents, but what people are saying is they're not robust enough.
Okay, well, we're going to object on that, but check, check with Methworld Parish Council, so that we're not making ourselves look silly and owed the criticism, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we haven't actually...
They agree with you there, exactly.
I'll, I'll email Methworld in a second.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think we're, we're, we are fully in support of Methworld and what they want to try and...
Or you could do that, you're saying that, you could say that you fully support the objections of other councils that are directly affected by...
And use the word solidarity.
Yeah, I'd say, you know...
I mean, that would, that would cover then everything, because...
Because it doesn't have a direct impact on Brandon. So I think you have to acknowledge, although there is not a direct impact on Brandon, we acknowledge the impact on the surrounding parishes and support their objections.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're...
That sounds, good, good rate to go down.
We're sticking with them and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're behind, we're behind their, their objections, basically.
Yeah.
And I think on that last statement that Tina's just made there, we'll go ahead with an email on those lines.
Yeah, because then you're not opening your up to hypocri, big hypocrites about your own SPA, so...
Yes, that's right.
So, I mean, politically it's a, it's a good, we love everybody, we're solidarity and, but we're not going to actually shoot ourselves in the foot.
I think we don't have, we don't have the expertise, do we? It's laypeople, we have, we have opinions and we know what we, what we might want to object to, but...
The moral issue isn't an objection.
Exactly.
The science is outside our postcard, let's face it. I mean, who, and I'm not going to draw all over those, all of that technical issues on this, that's outside my bloody carrying.
And again, in reality, that, you know, if we can only object to things on the site, anybody in the country could object to things on the site, how much weight does it actually carry? You know, I think, I think it's better to be, seem to be supporting the actual council that's affected there.
So when we, when we write this up, we'll say that we discussed the issues of pollution, noise, traffic, and, and then you can say, because we can say we discussed those, and then you can say that we will object on the grounds, you know, whatever I just said. Yeah.
That wish I thought we knew.
They've got the recording.
We can look back at that.
And then I think that's, that's probably sound, we just need to cover the issues.
And you want to have a look at that before this ping goes, do you, Jim?
I could do, but I'm, I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much, you know, we know what we want to say.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think anything wrong with we said in there, but, you know...
Well, in that case you instruct the office to piece it together and send it off, yeah?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
We do have vested interests.
So you're all happy with that, if we do that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you anyway, that's fine.
We do have a vested interest in this, because of the traffic thing will come later, is that right?
Well, they're all articulate units as well, aren't they? They're not, they're articulate units, you know?
These companies have a way of getting around things, like your friend's the whole ruck, he uses subcontractors. See, even though they're whole ruck lorries.
Yeah, yeah, you can't just, you can't keep tabs on them.
Okay.
So we dealt with that one, haven't we?
Yeah. Correspondence, there's a letter here, the, for the Timby Yard one, the appeal's being dismissed, we've all seen that one. Clerks update, any relevant information received, have to issue on the agenda.
Yes, so the last hundred days I've been speaking to Wayne about the rail sightings and about the growing issues, and I know there was an issue last week, wasn't there, with stuff being dropped on the roads? And one of the things that's highlighted is that although we know things are happening, we can't evidence who it actually is, we all know who we think it is and we can make assumptions, but unfortunately, if you want to get it stopped, then you actually have to have evidence in order to do that. So Wayne's put me in touch with Andrew Harris at Norfolk and...
Who's put you in touch with Andrew Harris?
Wayne, Ben.
Oh, Wayne Ben, I remember him.
So one of the things they were talking about is maybe us reporting it to the police or traffic commissioner? Which is okay, I'm assuming that the police have a reporter on their...
It's not criminal, it's fair.
Website, but, but it doesn't matter, I think it's about uploading, I think it's about upload, because if it's traffic, it is, it is illegal to obstruct the highways, I mean, it's a bit tedious maybe. But it's an offence to deposit muck and materials on a highway and section 161 of the Act States. If someone deposits anything whatsoever on a highway that causes injury or endangerment, that said person is guilty of an offence.
Yeah, but the police have turned up all these incidents and nothing's been done, so you're not, there's no mileage in that, right? I'm telling you now, the police are not going to prosecute. We had all that concrete beams, right? The beams actually came off and they turned up, they're the police, and nothing was done.
So what's...
That isn't offensive, it's a serious, if you've got an unsafe load on a lorry, it's a serious offence.
Those beams, if they, if they'd have come up on the rail line, you know that Network Rail would have been a facility in many ways, wouldn't they?
So what's the option then? Because obviously you want to try and get them to change what they're doing. So therefore, the only way to build up a case is to build up incidents that's big enough to create a hotspot, so...
Well, I've, I've got all the photographs, I've logged all the photographs, and when I went to Norfolk County Council about them, they put, they put a condition on that yard that they must not come through the town. That at the moment is being processed, Andrew Harris at the moment is processing that, right? They had to come up with a lorry management plan, which was acceptable to Norfolk County Council. They've thrown two management plans out because they're absolutely ridiculous. The only thing they've complied with is the wheel wash. And they're not, and they're totally fed up about that network, it's going to cost them an awful lot of money and good job. Basically, every, is this...
Yes.
Is this part of me, still? So part blame?
Yes.
That's all right, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that's not known publicly, is there?
No, not yet.
The thing is, it's...
It's not any general, I think we should, I think we should switch it, it's not...
Well, we are, it's, it's part of the...
It's any other business, isn't it?
So, so the thing is, to move away from the intricacies of that, my, my thing for the update is that I am going to start talking to Andrew about things and try and find out what the heart of the possible is. What is the best way for us to manage the information in such a way that it's actually useful for Norfolk County Council? Which is what I need to know. It's okay, we've got this problem, you, you're trying to get an HGV management plan going, brilliant. If we know that that isn't adhered to, how do I tell you that information in such a way that it actually impacts them complying with the conditions of that? That's what we need to know. So he needs to say, well, I'd need, you know, maybe it is a photograph of the vehicles going through the town, because they're not supposed to go through the town, so if you have vehicles, because they're all time stamped. If they have pictures of vehicles going through town, whether they're shedding their loads or not, they're not supposed to be in Brandon. That's what you then send to them, say, oh, another vehicle today, another vehicle today, another vehicle today. And you send the picture and it's their timestamp that it's a Brandon.
We had a big, big win at Norfolk County Council. We produced the evidence, they've told the company you must not turn left, you have to turn right. He's, Andrew Harrison is in the process of putting a lorry management plan in, they've been presented with the evidence. The only other alternative you can go, you can go with VOSA, the Vehicle Licensing Centre. And if you've got evidence, right, that there's an unsafe load, then you present it to them, they look at that quite seriously. But that is a heavy lift, I'm not coming down that road, presenting all this to vote. I've tried to contact VOSA, if you can get a response back from them, I tell you, you want a national lottery.
True.
So what else do we do then?
Just think part of the plan of action could be to try and set up, like a traffic watcher, monitor it ourselves.
No, we've got, we've done all the evidence, I've done the traffic at the HGV, it cost me nine thousand quid.
Yeah, we, no, I mean, do, do something personally, if we, we've sat there on High Street, porridge, having coffee, we've seen vehicles coming through, if we were to log that information.
Send it to me, I've done all that, I've got the books, I've got a fennel, I've done a lorry count, we've done the book, we've got the evidence.
But not since that...
Run you all over again.
Well, the thing is, is if they see it and they send it to me, that's fine, I'll just keep a folder of them and whenever I get one, I'll send to Andrew and say, we've got another one, got another one. I'm just going to be a pain in the ass and keep sending more...
It's only because that regulation's just come in, that they're not allowed to turn left. So really the evidence can only be from the day that that order was made, anything prior to that.
Well, it's in, it's in limbo, they haven't actually enforced what it is, they're stipulated you must not turn left, you must produce... The last threat, if you like, that company got was that if you don't comply with the condition, we will withdraw the original application, which was for the second siding.
Yeah.
That siding went in without planning permission, you know that, don't you? And the condition was, if you don't come through Brandon, you will be allowed to have that second side. I have spoken to Andrew Harrison, he's told me that there is always that option open, that they withdraw the planning application for the second side. And that would make that side not that commercial, because you could only be able to get a certain volume in. That's why they put it in without planning permission.
Well, this is what I'm saying, actually, if we started doing some sort of traffic survey now, after that has been made...
Okay, what, how is this, pray tell me, how's this traffic survey going to function, please, pray tell?
Well, I think all we can do is we can try and get a group of us together and have a period of time that we all, we sit down there and cover it. Sit on the High Street drinking coffee.
I mean, it can be, it can be relatively ad hoc, because it's just about getting, it's just about building up another portfolio, because it's good that a huge amount of work has already been done and there's been progress on that. But if there is a way that you can enhance that, even if it is remote, if you just happen to see it, you just, you know, I'm not saying they have to invest huge amounts of time or money into it. But if you get anything, or anybody gets anything, or something turns up on your Facebook page, send it to me.
Okay, well, I'll give you an example, all right? I've got a phone call, two phone calls and two photographs about the incident of Mr. James on the farm. We all know what happens there, that's the first sharp right turn the trucks do, and if they're not shitted up, all that deposit will come off the lorry and that'll drop onto the, I've still got the photo, now, that'll drop onto the, onto the road. So I ran the aggregate facility out, which I thought may have been the perpetrator. And actually, it wasn't, because he assured me that his trucks were not shipping, it was a particular material, right? It's that phosphate, that carbon phosphate, you know they take that... It's that phosphate, that carbon phosphate. You know they take that material down there, they inject it with carbon, right? And then that's, that's the carbon, that's that carbon, that carbon neutral process.
Yeah.
We all have to subscribe to, right? That weren't his lorry, because he weren't shipping. So I rang up the other, I'm not going to mention it now because that's all recorded, right? So I rang up the company which ships that carbonate material through Brandon. And yes, he put his hands up, he said, that was, in all probability, that was, that was ours. But to his credit, and I'm not going to mention his name, the other aggregate facility came out with the road sweeper. And one of the men came out with a broom, he took it off the footpath, put it in the road. And the road sweeper took it all away, so that they are prepared. But you have to find out who these people are.
That's to be witnessed, really, doesn't it?
You have to witness.
Um, and that's always the problem, always a problem, which is why, you know.
The phosphate is not as bad as it used to be, and I'll tell you why, because they've gone to each rep. And there's very little comes out of that now. They've got an extension on the planning, on the planning permission up. The, the site, this side of the state of site, but they do very little stuff on that, and that will expire, and they've all gone to each rep, and they've got planning permission. To haul that. That doesn't eliminate the biggest problem, which I'm not going to mention, because you don't, I don't, I'm not going to have a mention in specific companies. And that's publicly recorded.
Well, it, because, well, it, it, it also, then it looks like you're, you're being vindictive against one person, and it's not, it is, I mean, that HGV situation's quite.
That's, that's the authority grab, isn't it?
Stop HGV coming through.
But to be fair, it doesn't really matter about referring to the name of the company, we just really need to refer to the issue. And what our plan of action is, and if said company is watching the recording, they know who they are.
We, we know what the problem is. There's a company turning left and they've been told not to turn left. And as yet, Andrew Harris has not enforced it. They've been ever so lenient with them, they've given them, I've seen the plans for the wheel wash. The wheel wash has to go in, they have to configure that entrance, and that might help because of the white slot, they call it the snail trail, right, it's disgusting, right? So we're waiting for Norfolk County Council to enforce a condition which was imposed upon them in March.
So does that mean until that condition is enforced, we can't do any?
I don't think there's much point until we know how that condition.
Okay, fair enough.
Is put in place. And you can speak to Andrew Harris.
Yeah, yeah.
Talk to him, he's a decent enough bloke, uh, he's determined to. He's determined for the company to comply with the condition, that's all we're asking.
Yeah.
That people comply with the planning condition. We all have to apply these rules, don't we?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Why should it be?
And it costs people money, yeah, no matter what, to adhere to the rules, it can cost you money.
But that's been a heavy lift, that's taken, not just me, but others, three or four years to get this particular company. In a planning committee, we knew it was going to come, we've got them in there, the condition has been laid down. It just has to be enforced. But if you want more clarity on this, Tina, you can ring Norfolk County.
I'm wondering whether to, 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 though the situation is, is it, would it assist in them making that decision? To actually enforce it much firmer, if we've got that evidence, is.
Well, I, I don't think there's any harm if people happen to see anything, that they're sending a photograph, that's not going to, you know. And if that helps, it helps, but, I mean, you know, Victor saying that we need to wait for this, okay, fair enough, we do. So we don't want to invest too much time and effort into it, but if you happen to see something, what anybody does, to send it to you.
Get something serious down there, like some old concrete beams coming off that lorry, right? Which was horrendous, I would go to the vehicle, Vosa, vehicle office of whatever it is, Vosa, they're quite si. They're quite serious on it. Unsafe loads are treated with seriousness.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, so we can follow, we can follow all angles, I mean, you know, but if people see it and report it, then. I can look at what I get, and if it's an unsafe load, I will endeavor to get it to Vosa. Um, but I'll report everything to Andrew anyway, just so that he can do all of his portfolio.
You can do that by all means, if I see anything, I'll, I'll, I'll bring it to you, or I'll take it to Andrew directly.
Yeah.
He's had, he's had the evidence, he's, they are aware of the evidence, we've got the numbers, we pitched up. I think you pitched up as well, didn't you? We'd done an HGV camp specifically from that yard.
Yeah.
Turn left and Cambridge specifically. Because sometimes these lorries have been out there, they're not, they're not late, but these were specifically late. And I think we got the region of, don't quote me on it, but a considerable. An unacceptable amount of HGVs to attack. You only have to look at the Google pictures, don't you?
Yeah.
And you can see the snail trail, so I don't use that phrase, but it's disgusting, you can see how it swans around.
I mean, that, that, that alone is the evidence that they're not complying.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's just about. Being, you know, just continually keeping it on our radar, and if things comes up, we just keep, we just keep on it. Because that's what you have to do, because we all know that councils get overtaken by events, don't they? And something else comes up, and something else comes up, and so we just need to just, just keep at it, really, and just keep.
Now, North, we're not going to let it drop, and obviously Wayne has got a bit between his teeth as well, he came to Norfolk with me. Um, I think Norfolk have been a help, Sub County Council have been no help. Which has been really frustrating and annoying. Norfolk has helped us a little bit, um. I'd like to think they were going to try and speed this process up, because we're in limbo at the moment, you understand, we're in limbo. I'd like to think that they're going to accept a lorry management plan.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like I say, even though we're in limbo, keeping the flow of information goes, is not going to be a bad thing. And maybe it'll prompt them to get us out of limbo.
I hope so, but we are minnows and they are not minnows.
Yeah.
They're, they're the Goliaths and, uh.
Well, David did all right, didn't he?
It's a long time ago.
Oh, I'm on.
Um, so I think we're pretty much covered there, where we're going to be going, um, or. How we're going to, we just keep, keep an eye on the situation.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, I've got no objection, if so, if you want to go out there and do another camp or pick up other, but I'm not going to do it again because I've done it already. And I've got the documentation, I'll bring that in and I'll show it to you.
That'd be lovely, thank you.
Okay, so if there's nothing further, um, we'll close the meeting at twelve forty. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I'm just writing about Vosa on my thing.